Flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Drag ever.
Nick just hasn't got a chance last minute.
Uh, entertain. A motion to approve agenda. So moved. Thank you. You get a second?
I'll second.
Zach. Roll call vote, Barisnasia, Savajo.
Yes.
T. Reikman.
Yep.
Hooper.
Yes.
A. Reikman.
Yes.
Legred.
Yes.
And Carries. Visitor's comments. Hmm, comments from the peanut gallery.
Mr. Chair, no, we don't know what the answer is.
Alright, thank you very much.
Shaved off at fifteen minutes.
No visitor. Yeah. What was your comments? All people will minutes for following meetings. February twenty eighth meeting. Ready to get a chance to review the minutes. I'm taking motion to approve them. Thank you, Jeff. Second. Do you, Angie? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, I glanced right over it. Special recognitions and honors. Let's go back to that.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of boards, and I'd like to recognize a few outstanding Lakers. First of all, Commander Lawson, entire Dollar for Scholars Committee. They raised just over thirteen thousand dollars in four hours. And all those funds go to this year's twenty twenty-two seniors. Um, Mary and her team have done a phenomenal job, so. Just want to put a shout out to her. Uh, I'm gonna jump and save Sarah and Amanda for last. Um, I also, I sent an email to all the board. Uh, we had some phenomenal, um, art students recognized for, um, in the gallery three hundred. And so they were selected at the Alexandria Technical Community College. If you go down the hallway, you'll find their art. Pretty amazing, but you see the People's Choice. Uh, we had Cash Fry, second place. You had People's Choice, Lily Ogdal, sixth grade, and Judges' Choice, Isaac Paul Ziehen, first grade. And then you see these artists, uh, were selected for the show. So you can see it's sixth grade, uh, free art, uh, fifth grade, fourth grade. So you had a lot of artists that were selected to be in the show, so it was pretty phenomenal. Is there anything I failed to mention, Miss?
No, they should be in the media blitz shortly, but really cool stuff. We, um, they had a show in Alexandria at Alex Tech, but we got to walk through, it was really full hallways of, um, parents and, um, community members just walking through. It was from six to eight different schools. I didn't think, um, that participated, and so just a huge, we had a huge showing from the Milwauka students, and it was really exciting to see.
And our last two recognitions, uh, we're lucky to have today is Sarah and Amanda. They've selected the twenty twenty-two emerging leaders, um, ASCD, so it's Associated for Supervision and Correctment Development. They're part of the ten people cohort for emerging leaders. Uh, they were nominated last August, and so they were selected, and so we just got a chance to recognize them tonight. And you can see what they're gonna be working on. Um, they're gonna support from all the mission of the ASCD participate and contribute regular cohort meetings. They're gonna work on their planning and delivering professional development statewide, uh, as emerging leaders. So anything you wanna add?
I think we're just trying to figure out what our.
Yeah, this is the first group that they've had, so we're really trying to connect with other cohorts to see what they have done in the past and just kinda see where our kind of.
More niches. It's, um, fun to connect with educators across the state. I think that's something that we've been lacking certainly since COVID, and so. But to see where everybody's at and what they're up to right now, um, and just see what the sampling is across the state. I think we sometimes think that we're, you know, in normal sort of that we're always on the outside, but everybody's doing some significant things similar to ours.
Right. Yeah. IT people, there's curriculum people, principals, no, I don't know.
Congratulations.
Very good. Alright, we're gonna consider approval claims and accounts.
Today we're gonna be approving, uh, one million three hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Summary of bills is presented here. Uh, I don't think there's anything out of the ordinary, and Drew, uh, actually we encoded all the bills this last month, so. Uh, Drew, anything you wanted to touch on or comment on?
Um, just one thing, when I was talking with Angie a little bit earlier, the Vicki was gone last week, so we didn't, uh, run any checks last week. We, so that's why, um, the, the bills that are about to be paid in this next check round, that's why that's a little bit higher. But, um, other than that, there isn't really a whole lot or anything really out of the ordinary or, um, anything unusual, I don't think.
Uh, and, you know, it's all within the budgets, no real concerns still here.
Entertainer motion. Thank you, Angie. Second. T. Reikman, I'll say it again. Thank you, Ted. All in favor? Don't say your favor in that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
There was one bill I was just gonna show you, NEC, just a reminder, everybody. That's replacing Johnson's controls. We had Johnson's controls for a number of years. This is the automated system that operates all of our buildings. And the reason why we made this switch is it's not proprietary, so we can use any local plumber, HVAC, um, versus when we had, uh, Johnson. Investment report, no significant change here. Drew, you were, would you say something earlier today about this?
Um, no, Vicki, need Vicki to put this together, it's the same as, as usual.
No change. So you can see your actual interest income. Eight thousand four forty-two, forty-six. So you can see we're at there. That piece. Uh, food service, I think we're a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for good. And that'll be, this will be changing, uh. Obviously with everybody, uh, you know, getting federal money paying for all meals. So one thing we'll be targeting over the next month is identifying products over the summer. So we did, uh, we did a grant in to get, uh, bulk milk in our two main campuses here. There'll be two bulk milk machines here and one at elementary school. Through the, uh, George Dairy, she's, um, uh, Mrs. Bold is on the dairy council. And so it'll allow us to have bulk milk, it'll be colder glasses. It's basically, it's free, you know, with all the grant monies that they have locally and in the state. So it would be an opportunity, and then there's also been a shortage of milk cartons, so that's one of the other reasons why. So, if we see it not coming.
Do a lot of districts have it?
It's pop, it's picking up a lot of pop there, it's, you know, you know, it's picking up a lot. The other thing is.
Of course they do. Transcenters.
There's a lot of cow.
Yeah, I saw our neighbors over at Glacial, so a huge, you know, huge, uh, congratulations to them. They, they got a food, uh, farm to, farm to table grant. We do that here too, on a lot, larger scale. And so one of the things we're working with our, our FFA teacher, uh, is they're looking at, uh, putting some local gardens up here for food, you know, food to table, or farm to table. So we're working on site to do that, and, you know, in the big, big scheme, we don't have all the details worked out. The big picture is the partner of the city of Starbucks can turn the football field behind Wynn into a community garden. So it's, that's on a level of magnitude with our, but it'd be our CTE team. So from our industrial tech teachers building the, you know, the infrastructure, our, you know, our egg teacher picking and, uh, the, the starting of the crops, um, our fax teacher, you know, how they're gonna harvest and bring that to our school. So it's a, that, that's a ways out, of course, but it is the goal of this. Uh, but food service can play a major role in that here. So you're gonna see an update to our kitchen over at the elementary school this summer. Um, combi ovens, but that's pretty much it. That's food service. Here's our expense report. So you see we're at sixty-nine percent of our expenses. Our revenue reports, I know that, I, I don't know, Drew, if you've had to do it yet, but we had to do some draws in our extra dollars. So, you know, we're at, uh, on our total, we're at forty-six percent on our revenue. Have you had to do anything with that, Drew, yet?
No, no, I haven't.
But we've started to draw some extra dollars, and so some monies, uh, have to be spent, like, you know, in the initial extra dollars have to be spent by the end of June. So we're, you know, uh, Scott, uh, I know Scott, you were working on a, on a project this, for some summer learning. A lot of his, um, the monies that have to be spent right now have to be very specific on catching kids up with lost learning. So it can be in summer, um, summer planning, it can be on field trips, enrichment projects, so Scott, anything you wanna mention on that?
Sorry, hold on. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, we're just trying to, uh, begin what we did last year, and, uh, last year we had a lot of success because we were able to have a program where we had, we added paras to the normal teaching staff that we had, and we were able to rotate, rotate kids through smaller groups, um, and provide some incentives for kids, and it was a one-month program and went really well, and, and that's what we're approaching again this year, trying to be able to do that.
Scott was, uh, selected, uh, because there was some extra, extra, I don't know if it was extra two dollars, but he had to spend a different, uh, supplemental grant application. He should get awarded, I don't know, I don't know, what was the general amount? Do you remember?
I think all in total incorporating monies for K through six, it was gonna be in the ballpark of thirty thousand dollars, because it also includes transportation for kids from Lower East Side, Starbucks, so should be a good, good grant.
So when you start seeing some of these revenue reports, you're gonna start seeing extra dollars that are drawn. You know, of course, we have two years, and so we have some time. So that, that is the, uh, the bills that are approved tonight, Mr. Chair. Superintendent's report, just very briefly, I'll just hit on a couple key pieces. Today was the first day that I saw, uh, zeros across the board. So that was a pretty good deal. Uh, so. So, yeah, today we were, zeros across the board, which is the first time we've done that. Uh, I also include accounting zero new cases as of the twenty-seventh, which have been yesterday. Um, job openings, so this week is gonna be a lot of starting to hire. So, you know, this is our live website, so if you go to this, um. We're gonna look at social studies, like we have interviews for Wednesday. Industrial tech, we have one app. Uh, and that was because our industrial tech teacher has indicated that he's potentially looking elsewhere. We didn't wanna try to hire him, maybe, because I think it'd be near impossible to find him, because we only have one now. Uh, fax, we're, we're gonna, we obviously wanna keep our teacher, but she's not fully licensed, so you have to post for sixty days. Elementary education, we have, uh, one of the all shifts are on. I think Scott, we're gonna have three openings with intervention, so we have a current teacher who's likely going to intervention, and we have two retirements. Uh, so we'll get that. Um, physical education, we have Mr. John's route, who you're gonna, uh, if you approve him tonight, he'll be moving into the A D slash Dean role, so that'll open a full-time P E health teacher. And then we had another resignation, Riley Gusterson, so.
We have two.
We'll need two. We do have fourteen apps right now, so we'll be hiring that, uh, April fifth. Special education, we just had a resignation, uh, over at, uh, Wynn, and we're, you know, uh, we're, we're expecting we'll have at least one more. We got a resignation today from, uh, our eighth grade science teacher. Who's done a phenomenal job, so we posted that today, and we did get an app today, so that's pretty amazing. And then tomorrow, based on, uh, tonight's ready board meeting, is we'll be looking at, uh, probably hiring, instead of having one director, like, and Mrs. Potacek, they'll have two coordinators, so. The northern schools. So Parker's Prairie, Brandon Evansville, Seckles will share a coordinator, and then Milwauka will have a halftime coordinator, and we compare that with Wynn as a principal. And that's a huge win for us, because now we get a, basically a halftime licensed administrator over at Wynn, and we get a coordinator for our district, which will be big, and overall, we saved twenty-two thousand dollars from what we've been paying raid. So that's been good. This has been kind of a ongoing mental health. Uh, the other thing too is, we're likely with the restructure of raid, we'll have to hire, uh, early childhood, so overall, when you look at raid, so I'll get out of this. Sorry. When you look at raid, which I'll go down to the next one, is it'll be a staff shift, so I wanna share with everybody. With a director retiring, we had an opportunity to take a look at the total staff of thirty-nine. And in order to reduce it down, like Milwauka, we have four raid employees, which you probably don't even know they're raid employees, because they come here every day and they only work here full-time. What we're gonna do is, we'll be posting for three certified and one non-certified, and they'll become Milwauka Lakers. Uh, what does that mean to you? Basically, when Drew puts in cedro or our federals, it, this is, instead of going through raid, we just put in our cedro, so it gets, it's the same money. It's no, no, no big loss there. So really what you're gonna do is go from thirty-nine, these eleven people will get, they'll, they're gonna get hired by the district, so, you know, you'll just see some changes, uh, in staffing. So, so there, what raid will do is they'll go from thirty-nine down to six. Or is that right? I'll have to go look at that. You're gonna see a restructuring of raid, which will cause some shift, you know, some shuffling. Enrollment, we're just down one, uh, we're down negative three. From last month, so we're at, uh, currently, I think we're at twelve sixty-nine, um, so we're doing okay. The budget's built on twelve sixty, so thirdly, this is kinda gets to be our lowest spot. We usually tend to pick in four, five, six kids up before the end of the year. So we're gonna hold, we hold solid at twelve sixty-nine. I, I would say that was brought to my attention over a break, uh, this last week, we did have a foreign exchange student attend Milwauka area schools. Um, to make it very clear, I, I contacted the foreign exchange, uh, organization that sponsored our foreign exchange student, and I'm not gonna give out any more information, because he is a minor. But unfortunately, uh, there were two contracts in this family signed to come over here. Law enforcement was involved, and was involved, and you could be in violation of one of those protocols, and so, uh, when you break those protocols, then the firm is gonna cancel your replacement here in Milwauka schools. It's not a school-associated thing, it happened off school property, happened on a weekend, didn't involve any kids here at the school. So ended up happening is, is, uh, his contract was violated, and he's returned home to his home country. Uh, we're not really able to provide educational services, because he's not an American and he's not a member of our school district, not a member of our community, and we're not authorized to be an online provider, so. Reached out to our attorney, and that's kinda where that's at, so. Any questions on that? I know it caused a lot of, a lot of, um. You know, it was a very difficult situation, I think it caused a lot of, uh, I think everyone wanted to help him. Uh, I think unfortunately, when you, sometimes when you only know ten percent of the facts, and you're trying to fill in the rest of the blanks, it became. I would say for me and Nate, we're still in the ten percent facts. We didn't go to his house, we didn't search, we weren't involved in it, we weren't involved in the investigation. I can share that he was a good kid in our school, uh, but unfortunately for him to attend our school, he has to meet the obligations of their contract, so that's kinda where that's at.
Did we, does he get credit for what he did here?
We did. So we, we sent his grades, uh, his update to his homeschool. I gotta be honest with you. I've never, in all my years being a principal, this year doesn't count for anybody. Like Italy is not gonna take any grades he gets to the United States and apply it to, this does not count as your junior year in Italy, because they're a very different structure, so. Usually it's almost like a gap year, it's an experience year, so.
Is that for all foreign exchange students?
From my, from my experiences, it is, it's almost like a lost academic year, but like a.
Sure.
Experience year. But he will.
But he'd be going back to the same place he would have been going back.
Yes, practice. And he, and we did send his grades and send out the date, so, I mean, we totally were working with the family and student, and, but I, I would share that. In, in none of my experiences ever, that's why at the end of the year, when you come to graduation, you hand out a certificate of completion, not a diploma. Because he wouldn't be eligible under your report policy to graduate, he would be complete his program. So we work really close with the family, and we'll continue to work with them. So. And then just an update outside, uh, tonight, I, I, we have a tentative agreement with our teachers, uh, they'll be voting on the contract, and so we'll all bring that together. The details are in the minutes I've shared with you tonight, and the, um. On the agenda, you're gonna, you know, this is not something we do normally here, but it's a teacher and special assignment. So, you know, for a long time, our A D was on his own individual administrative contract. You know, on a protecting the district and the employee, it's best that, uh, at least the recommendation is that we go on teacher and special assignments who work for the union, so he. Our A D slash Dean would retain his, you know, seniority in the week, he could go right back into a P classroom, or whatever he's certified in, and if it doesn't work out.
Without losing those years for retirement, I guess.
So that's something you're gonna look at tonight, so that's in there.
Is there a mandate to that special assignment?
It has to be every year.
Every year?
And then, if you saw out here on the north on the track, the storage shed, you're starting to see it get framed up, uh, that'll get wrapped up. Uh, and then all the bleacher wood, all the bleachers have been torn out, so I talked to the facilities committee tonight, what we're gonna do is have a little Google Doc, and if people wanna get some, uh, I've heard some people that really want this wood. You can come in, and it's, it's really of no value, it's gonna go, I mean, it is valued to certain people, some project people, and you can come in, pick up your five pieces, and then after a week, it'll, it'll just be out there, and then they go on, so they can. Otherwise, what's, it's taking up, we'd better put stuff inside the shed outside, so the wood's protected, so, and our ox is not gonna be till July, so I. We're just gonna try to get it out of there.
You know, a lot more when you do that.
That, that's it.
That, this is.
Oh, that's everything.
And our just the ten classes have all the wood they want. All the projects have been done, so. But I've heard some people that really want this bleacher wood for some kind of, I don't know. That damaged E T V. So. It's gotten me in trouble, boy. So that's the superintendent's report.
Chris, do you know when you vote?
Uh, April sixth, Wednesday, next Wednesday.
So the goal on back pay would be somewhere about the fifteenth of May. So we can put everything in the computer, uh, here in April, and then, uh, Ron would be, you know, Easter in the middle, probably in summer, no later than the fifteenth of May. Okay?
Alright, any questions for Chip? Uh, I consider approval resolution three two eight oh two two, accepting donations to the school district.
I, I don't think I have a copy of the donations. Say I got one academy for two thousand dollars from Generation Mutant Corp. Is that it on page seventeen? Oh, sorry, that one. Uh, maybe.
No, page seventeen is the donation.
Page seventeen's answered, so one academy. Jen, you think?
Make a motion to approve. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Zach.
Zach.
Um, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent calendar.
Here's what's going on in hires. So we've started, uh, adjusting some R N Es for next year, so you can see some of these. J.J. Harney, uh, you might recognize the name, his father was a superintendent here for many years, he worked at Wynn as a dental health provider, and him and his wife are moving back. His wife's a first teacher, and got hired in Alec, and they're gonna move back here to Lake and Starbucks. Harvey's a family here, so he wants to go back to Wynn. Jared Lyle, he'll be recruiting here tonight, he's gonna be coming in the rest of the year to get our level-three program up and running, and, uh, and then I, we just posted him as elementary teacher, and he'll be reassigned in the fall, it's a special, uh, M D's proxy, his license right now. And then Abby, that Massman's gonna take over Lake of Legends this summer, and then Jackie Noeys, this'll, uh, have our full kitchen staff full. And then she just adds, you know, when Audrey came here, geez, four years ago, uh, this program's just completely expanded, I mean, there's a waiting list to get it. She's managing multiple people, um, it's almost becoming a monster, and then, as I mentioned, we have, uh, Tulsa and Mr. John's route as our new A D slash Dean. And then he'll stay on the same teacher contract as, uh, M T A. And then, uh, as of today, we have one retirement, because we re-actualized last month. And then these are resignations. All these positions have been posted.
Will Jared Lyle, I mean, you have him listed as a sub for the rest of the year, would he sub it? Or is he?
Where needed. Where needed, but we're also trying to, our goal is on day one, where we believe we have three or five kids that are already gonna qualify for level-three program coming from Wynn to here, or, you know, from current, current students here. So what we're trying to do is get the program up and running, mental health, level-three D teacher, para hired, so we can, uh, we can appropriately code it, uh, we build next year's budget.
The next year for the level-three wage bracket, will that cover K through twelve, or?
No, I think we start with maybe nine, twelve, and we'll try to expand to be seven, twelve, uh, just to make sure it's successful. Jared Lyle has been work, he has worked three years in a level-three program, so.
Very good. All entertain a motion to approve. Make a motion to approve. Jeff, second. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Ted.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Bits of praise some pick in, uh, this year, uh, on the baseball field, uh, we had one bid, it's from the baseball association, uh, for, you can see the bid for six thousand dollars. The softball is, you see, twenty. Twenty-five ninety-eight, and you can see our football track, forty-two ninety-eight, and this is just our athletic fields, so that's gonna be, uh, sorry, that's gonna be item. So, I guess I take this one at a time, and then.
Okay, I'll set for a day.
Yep.
Okay, so, I do ten is the.
Baseball.
Baseball. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you, Angie, all in favor?
Got it.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then the softball. Program. First of all, did you change any?
I do know they walked through it, Ethan walked through it, Phil and Phil. I think just the mowing. And trimming, but they're that track game prep. Are custodians doing that?
I do think they are, uh, because Ethan did that in Wisconsin, so I do think they are working on, along with, uh, former custodians.
Okay.
Is that for both softball and baseball?
Yes. They will.
Well, softball.
Baseballs do their, they'll do their own. Striping. Baseball Association does the game prep?
Okay, so back to the softball complex, all entertain a motion to approve that. T. Reikman will make a motion. Thank you, Ted.
I'll second.
Thank you, Savajo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then the football and track field. Bid. Entertain a motion.
T. Reikman will make a motion.
Thank you, Ted. I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then the grounds, we have.
We have two bids tonight, Mr. Chair. Uh, we have, uh, two bids. Two bids, uh, McCory, uh, this will be it for the next three years, it'd be at twenty-five, five hundred. And you can see they gave a tree chipping and turf prepared per hour, then they gave, uh, this, this other bid is from, like, Andy's Tower Hills. I don't know if the name didn't make in, but, uh, thirty thousand eight hundred, our recommendations go at McCory for twenty-five.
Does he have it today?
He has it. He's had it for the last three years.
And everything's been good, everybody's happy?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's good. T. Reikman will make a motion to accept Travis McCory.
Yep, I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consider approval of replacement of the Milwauka area school gymnasium scoreboard.
So, this, this winter, when we were looking at the gym and going to upgrades, and it was brought to my attention about updating our scoreboards. And, you know, at the time, we kinda did some running of numbers, and it was like, who, with Daktronics, it would be, it would be like four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and like, you know. With Daktronics, it would be like four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, like, you know, no possible way. And, you know, coaching wrestling, I've been doing a number of gyms and I was like, it's becoming kind of the thing and we, you know, so. When Bill brought it to me, I was like, ah, that ain't gonna happen, and so, he went and revisited in the, I don't know if it's Yellow Medicine East. U Score Vision, which seems to be a big popular thing, uh, he went and got some quotes, because. What this all stems back to is we did a presentation with Laker Foundation, um, right after Christmas, because there was an opportunity to name a restaurant gym. And, you know, we could maybe raise a million dollars and we didn't have anybody. So then we thought, okay, how can we get it down to maybe say seven fifty, so that was naming rights on seats, you know, so, you know, um. Angie Reckman couldn't have, Breakman Farms and put all big R on it, but, you know, it became problematic, cause there was gonna be like, okay, what's the sign, how you gonna do this, how you gonna attach it? Well, we thought we could maybe raise a hundred thousand, then we thought we could raise maybe a hundred fifty thousand dollars for advertising, cause if you go into the gym right now, there's manners that got hung on the bottom of our scoreboards. Probably the best advertising by anybody, bucks, there's like five hundred bucks for the manor and it's hung there for.
Many years.
Geez, twenty plus years. So, but in order to have advertising, you're gonna have to have some type of digital venue to do that, and so. When I visited with, you know, um, Rick Extran on the board, you know, he just gave us ideas about what they have done in other locations. And we thought this would be a way to pay for it, while when we ran the original thing through Daktronics, it just was no way that money was gonna, it just wasn't gonna work. So then we got another quote from Score Vision and really what you're doing is getting the same. When you buy Daktronics, a lot of it is the software you're getting, it's proprietary from Daktronics, the, the L E D. Like flat panel TVs you're getting are almost identical. So when we got this quote, the first one was like, was like a hundred sixty-two thousand, or it was a hundred forty-eight thousand, the cheapest. And then you get to one arrival, you know, then to get a little bigger, it was one seventy, one sixty, the first one's one forty-eight. It's like, how are you gonna pay for one forty-eight, so we went in and we looked through L T F M, well, when we didn't do a remodel of the parking lot drop off area in front of school. We allocated a hundred fifty thousand dollars, wow, the first scoreboard was a hundred forty-eight thousand, so you're like, wow, there would be a way to do it through L T F M. So, I had Vicki run the numbers and that's what it came up to, wow. That was to get one big one and one small one, and, so facilities met, you know, met and the conversation was, get, do it right the right way, so. What, the recommendation is you're gonna spend one fifty out of your long-term facility maintenance and spend thirty-three thousand dollars out of your unreserved fund balance of like two point eight million. So. That's how I arrived at this, sort of beyond L T F M. Uh, we've entered the L T F M, uh, spreadsheet, so it's already in. It just needs approval, so we can, I need approval, so somebody can sign this, so they can make our scoreboard and the goal is to have it up and operational before graduation. So, that's where we're at, Mr. Chair.
So with the advertising dollars, are those still planned in the Laker Foundation, or are they coming back to the school?
Well, right now, we. It's wide open. You know, the conversation that we could probably make, maybe. Some people said we could make maybe thirty thousand dollars a year. You know, but. You know, ultimately it comes back to school anyway.
I think in terms of referendums coming up in the future, thinking that we didn't go out and ask people to help pay for those scoreboards and we're just looking to bill for it all, that might make it a tough road for in the future. If we don't funnel that money back to pay for the boards, I mean, we can kind of budget that out and say that you paid for it. Cause what is that, next referendum, next year or the year after?
Well, I'd be renewing our, it'd just be renewing what we have, we wouldn't have anything to do with L T F M. So the question is.
People don't know where the money's coming, you can spend.
Well, yeah, I think, you know, if it's not advertised, it was paid for through donations and it just came out of our budget, then they're gonna be like, oh, we got money, but. I don't know if we'll get it back, what was our, what's our total? With bleachers and.
But I'm also careful with paper right over your corner, where it's at me, and so the more you talk, the more you're confusing everything. The reality is, we had an entry for a hundred fifty thousand dollars that's gonna go away at noon thirty. So when we had an opportunity to update our scoreboards and we didn't have to go beg for money, and you're sitting on a fund balance that's three percent.
I think it's a good point, though.
It was just an opportunity.
I think it's a good point to figure out where we want donations to come from, like, advertising dollars, do you want it to look like foundation?
So what we wanna do is, we wanna turn around and offer advertising, but, and our conversation is, Nate's gonna have a video, you know, a video. It's gonna take technology to operate this, and right now, we're, we have thirty-two thousand dollars in session standing account, where's that money gonna go to? So it was just an opportunity to update our scoreboards.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
When you said that, the hundred and fifty that we chose not to do the updates, it was just gonna go away?
Well.
I don't understand exactly what that means, could you explain that a little bit?
She wasn't here for the drop off discussion, probably.
No, I was here, I, I knew all about it, but when you say money that we allocated to do something is just gonna go away, it's still there.
It's still there.
So where does it go exactly when you say go away?
They would just sit in the L T F M account for a year.
For next year.
Years.
Or something else that we would, I mean, if we didn't use it, I'm just trying to say, if we do what we do, if we don't, we don't, if we don't use it. Do we then maybe create some roadmap of a way to use it, alternatively, I mean?
Right, then, so what I, what I can't pull off, cause it's sitting on, I can't get the shared drive, is we have all of our entries for all summer, all next year. So the problem is, all the money programmed for the next four years is already programmed, because, right?
So who programmed that when?
We did, uh, five years ago, cause every year you have to submit an L T F M to go into levy and then what we do in October is we reconcile it, so what did you actually spend it on? Cause you have to have a plan to receive the money, so when you come into June, you have to, you have to have a budget in, so we have to have an, uh, L T F M budget, so we put so much for electrical upgrades. So many upgrades for air handling systems. So the entry that you have is one fifty, yeah, the money does not necessarily go away, but. All the money for next year is pre-programmed, so, what our thought was, is that we've seen thirty percent increases every year, so if you lock something in at this price, you're not gonna get it for this price.
You could use it on another, a different project. Just have to decide which project you wanna use it on. I do also like the idea of, I know when you guys talked about the scoreboards earlier, you talked about somehow tying it into a curriculum. Some sort of programming where there's a.
I think that would be an end game, kinda, you know, maybe not right away, but I do think that's potential, is that maybe there's some, some people that do wanna look at. You know, all the way from setting up like a starting lineup to have it set to music and.
Instant replay.
An instant replay and, and, you know, and then even kids that are like, oh, it'd be kinda cool, maybe to work for Fox Sports or ESPN or, you know, I mean, so, I mean. That's obviously not probably gonna happen right away, but I do think there is some of that moving forward and.
We had video production in school.
We currently have a di- a semester course of digital media that.
Yeah.
Karnah and I have already talked about, how do we? Marriage to.
Yeah.
Get a kid to, get a kid to come to a boys' basketball game one night. And take pictures and take video and now that is the, that's the introduction, when the lights turn off.
And so much of it's streaming, you can upstream a game too, with multiple cameras and I. I mean, when we had it, we had, we had video production was what it was.
Right.
But, I think that this helps with that, I mean, it helps, it's another tool for the curriculum.
Important, Bill, does it?
I personally, what I understood is this would pay for itself in four years.
Yeah.
We just haven't done it, uh, because the problem is. The problem is the Laker Foundation is getting up and going, so we were gonna do this, but fronting the cost, Laker Foundation can't do it right now. Now, so we, we had confusion, we had conversations in the endowment, that they would pick up this tab, so now I'll come back with the full circles. We could probably make money off this, if we wanna follow that model. You just, currently the Laker Foundation, if we, somebody came in and put their names on a big old C for flags and it was a million bucks. Then, you know, we have to figure out what that might be, but our original, the hell is all came going was. Three months ago, we were like, how could we generate money for the Laker Foundation that would go back to kids, so. All this is, in my opinion, and I'm not married to this by any means, is if we wanted to find a way to generate money through Laker Foundation, through advertising. We could probably. Make money off it, but I'm careful to say that, cause until I know, you know, Diamond Doctor's gonna advertise for five hundred bucks a year, or whatever it's gonna be, we're just not really sure. But I, that's what's finally shared with us, so that's what, you know, you go down Benson, it's pretty important, but they have, I don't know, I'm not here to pick on Benson, like. They just have one ag commercial on, I don't know if they must assign a big, cause that's the only thing that sits on that thing. Um, so it'd really be on the movement on the Laker Foundation, us and how we would go forward, so, so the answer is, firstly, if we paid, if we paid for it. You know, unless the Laker Foundation wants to write a check for what we did for it, then I think their evidence come back to school to pay for the scoreboard.
Yep.
And we can probably find a model that we can probably, you know, pay for within four years. And just like the other night, I don't know, I walked into a P B E Hancock basketball game that I. I mean, wow.
That's pretty cool.
Feels really cool.
And if it could be giant on the spot, the way this is gonna change, I'd be shocked if you couldn't get some advertising from some of those businesses, even outside of our community, we just haven't. We haven't thought that way, so.
That's the nice thing about digital scoreboards. Have the flexibility to be superior, could I advertise the tech game?
I do think there's a lot of great pros for it, I want something that I know maybe hasn't been really talked about yet, is that. You have to have knowledge to be able to run that, it's not super easy, so I saw that training was on here, that been at all thought about. Who is capable and willing and able to do that, is there a person or are you just gonna wing it?
Now, so what the commitment was, is that when we did this, um, for now, the Laker Foundation was ready to eat that cost, cause it's like. I mean, when you buy this, it is like. Uh, I don't have the exact number, but it might be like eighty, two hundred bucks a year, cause all the software updates, all the things that come through and all the digital things that get uploaded into it, cause it runs off an iPad. But the idea was, uh, we're gonna meet with Karnah, you know, if you bend the more, uh, Morris, but they have their own little.
Genius crew.
Video production.
Video production genius crew.
So it's a, it's a activity.
Advertising.
It's a huge deal.
But they do a pretty good job when you watch the games and it's multiple cameras, replays.
Yeah, it's awesome.
They got like sideline cameras and everything. It's pretty cool.
Right, I, I, I think that's all really cool, but I, I, I work for a tech company and you have to have somebody in charge of doing all of that maintenance, cause it gets. If you just miss one or two updates, it just, stuff starts to fail really fast. So I just was curious if you had somebody that we felt.
Does the company provide support as well?
It does say that there is tech support team access to the world class. Which is great.
Mark Meyer, John, somebody else? Well, I go back to.
I do not.
No, but our, our, our thought was, uh. So, the thought was like this year, you know, my son, that, he worked for, he's worked for the tech department the last two years, so he's updated all our software, all of the gears, gets all the Chromebook stuff. For all the students this summer and then, you know, this year we bought PIN TV, all of it get reprogrammed, so him and Tori came in and they spent the afternoon reprogramming everything. With Mark's provision, but Mark's like, I don't really can do anything, cause they can do it, I think we have those kids that can do this, we just gotta get up and get it running. So with the master schedule, you're gonna see an hour of video, you know, video, I don't know the exact term, but like when we met earlier. To register the right kids and then let them loose on it, but getting them to training and then having a class afterward, so. Cause to me, this is like, it's. I can't promise you everything, cause I, I, I can see where this could go.
Right.
And my commitment is that, we're gonna, we do this, we're gonna do it right.
Like we talked about, we don't wanna have a fancy scoreboard that just keeps scoring. That's, that kind of.
Right. Maybe that's just where I was worried or being all concerned, just cause it.
Oh, it's concerning.
It's like.
Yeah, we don't wanna have a super fancy scoreboard that just keeps scoring.
Yeah, or it just goes blue screen.
Right.
Yeah, it can't keep scoring, because we didn't get a tech upgrade.
It probably won't happen.
But I think exactly what you just said, Orton Hills can do this.
Yeah, they've been doing it for five years at least.
Or three times our size.
Yeah, yeah.
I know the revenue dollars are out there.
Some of the neat things, like their, the hospital over there has made their own commercials, where they're like throwing basketballs around to the doctors and then. They'll do that on breaks and they pay per month, I would assume, and then, you know, uh, one of the parents had taken video at a bunch of games and. They made a entrance video for both basketball teams and that's played in the dark and then they come out and the lights flash and it's cool.
Very cool.
There's a lot you can do with it and it's fun for people that are watching too.
The two concerns I have with it is, to echo with Angie. I mean, so, a year ago, we were sitting here with COVID and all these cameras and getting things broadcasted to the world, and I remember sitting here. By Justin and we were talking about how this is gonna keep going, you know, cause grandma can sit down in Florida and watch the kids. You know, you can watch a friend from wherever in the state, you know, that you're not gonna go see, it kind of fizzled, I would say.
Oh, but, yeah.
So, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go down this path. It cannot fizzle, there has to be the curriculum to follow it, the class, the commitment that it is well done and lights out, it's, it's something to see. You know, moving forward, if it goes, that's a concern, the second concern I, you know, talked about in the facilities committee. You know, in November, when we came with the, the master plan, where are we going, I, I really wanna get to that, I wanna get back to that global thinking, the, we talked about it again tonight. You know, what do we have in three years coming, we've had two years COVID, now we're three years away from that hitting the door of the school, so we can really budget, really plan. I, I get frustrated or concerned with, you know, the, not that it's a little buy, but a little, little purchase here, little purchase there, little, so where are we really going? You know, what direction are we going, you know, I, I really wanna get to that, I really wanna make sure we do that, and, and these type of things frustrate me. You know, when it's the, and it's not nickel and dime, it's more than that, but it kind of feels that way to me. I'd much rather do a, a, a big project moving forward that we, if we gotta hold up and not buy, not do anything, cause we all know what direction we're gonna go. That's what I would encourage, and I really wanna make sure we don't gloss over or don't get away or get back to, whatever the term is, on that. Those are my two concerns with this situation.
You know, I was gonna save this to other, to other, but I mean, it kind of fits, it kind of piggybacks on, on that, I mean, I, I'm gonna support this, this scoreboard, but I've also, I do think. You know, that sheet that you gave over here not too long ago, Chip, that big sheet that had, uh, basically all the different potential maintenance and. And then I think we got three, three different highlight markers with it, and then we picked what, what color, you still got Ted?
There you go. Those, those three.
Everybody else get their time?
Those three. But anyway.
Those highlighters.
But.
My point is, is, is I think that, maybe, like Ted said and Angie said, I think, maybe, you know, and we, I know we haven't had a work session in a while and. Maybe that gives us a chance to, to go through that list and maybe openly talk about some of these things and, and list them from. What's most important to, to maybe least important, and then we can kinda.
Yeah, so like, here's an example, okay? So this is our L T F M tenure plan and it got updated on June seventeenth, you know, last year, so this is what the plan gets handed in, you know, my concern with this is when you start looking at this. Okay, why twenty percent, why this number, you know, you just pick a number, right, replace drinker phone, and well, guess what? That all, that's all gonna take care of COVID money, so that placeholder you would've had in over here, I don't know if they even have a number. But some of that stuff's been taken care of, and then the other thing is, is a lot of this stuff that you're looking at, you're sitting on one point four million dollars of COVID money, you can spend on this, but you can't spend on a scoreboard. So all those hydration stations, they all getting swapped out, because guess what, grant money came through. I'm not saying it's right, cause it's all, it's, it's all taxpayer money, I mean, but what happens is you got like one point four million, what do you wanna do with it? That's why I went back to reset last fall, because when I look at this, some of this stuff, like. Uh, you can do other things with, so we need to, like, just to, just this week, Drew, we got a message from M D, now they're approving these units. So if this number was gonna be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is on your L T F M budget tracker, which, that's what Site Logic is gonna do on the eleven, they're gonna come back and talk to facilities, cause now they put real numbers to it. Cause this is just, I don't wanna say it's made up, cause it's not, but this project list was put together by a bunch of people that are not experts. Right, so if you sort this through, and which it is.
But also pre-COVID, I mean.
Yeah, pre-COVID, so then you got this money that can go fix other things, what I'm seeing is, you've got some monies that you normally wouldn't get, so you could never. Normally, you're so strapped in on COVID, you know, on L T F M dollars, that normally you couldn't consider this, without the Laker Foundation writing the check. So really what you're doing is, you're swapping some money for this, for this, and then, like, the, the reason we got a Site Logic is, you know, so, uh, at one point for a minute. We, when I wrote the budget last August with Vicki, we put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for air handling upgrade. we, when I wrote the budget last August with Vicky, we put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an air handling upgrade. Wha- what are we gonna do? Because I, I mean, which one are we gonna replace, where are we going with it? That's why I heard SiteLogic, because they're gonna come back and do that, but that placeholder is already, was already in LTFM, so there's two fifty, you just extrapolated out, so that's kinda how, this is kinda all right, because it doesn't go away. At the end of the day, you have to reconcile it, you can go upside down for certain years, but over time, it has to balance out, so that's kinda where we're at. So there is a priority, but I would argue, this was not done by an expert. So that's why we had engineers come through with SiteLogic, they're gonna come back.
So Ted, to Ted's point, it might be kinda, with, maybe in tandem with SiteLogic to revisit that,
Yeah.
that master plan, take out the stuff that we can use COVID money for, don't wanna lose that.
Well, you have lots of different monies, revenues, that's why SiteLogic was the one to pick, because they involve elders, which we're gonna go to workshop on Friday, because there's all colors of money that you have access to if you don't run the future, because like the parking lot, you're not gonna take that out of LTFM, you don't wanna update it, because it's gonna be such a large number. So what else would it be, so like, how can you take advantage of all these dollar streams? We wanna, if you wanna remodel the media center, well, you're not gonna take that out of LTFM, there's all the things you can do, you can do lease levy, there's lots of options, like, you know, I wanna have that all presented to you in priority by experts, so then you can make some informed decisions, which will start this spring.
That would be smart.
So facilities will meet on the eleventh, they'll present to us, and we'll see if it's of value, then they'll come to the full board and a work session.
Well, I, I think the other thing too, to this point, is that, I mean, you can also kinda look at this as an investment as well, not only can we, you know, increase some of our curriculum with the video production side of it, but there's also gonna be revenue to be had from it, you know, and it's probably a conversation for later as far as where those advertising dollars go. Does Laker Foundation just write a hundred and eighty thousand dollar check to reimburse the school for the scoreboards and then they get the revenue? Or does the school, you know, basically keep the revenue until we're reimbursed for this amount?
And that, that discussion was had, and it was not like they, they were very open to that idea, but we just had a.
I think the donors would be open to a package that they can get a charitable donation as well.
Yeah. But if you wanna get it going on today's current dollars.
Correct, and that's.
We had to get moving on, that's the only reason why you're seeing tonight and not three different work sessions is, um, if you wanna get it on, because they'll tell you the quote's only good for like thirty days, and then it goes up forever, so.
If you don't do it, I'm okay with it, but I just thought, this is how we work the numbers, this is how you're, you're alive to it.
Alright, well, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you Zach, you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Jeff, beat Jeff.
Okay.
Thank you Jeff, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Other business, any other uh, announcements, Chip?
Uh, so, we have the preliminary, uh, sharing of the results, uh, SiteLogic will be on the fifth, we did have an ideation session, uh, about a week ago, or two weeks ago. I'm just gonna be telling you, like, the ideation, our goal is how can we get down to two ropes in ten years? Uh, to just limit our number of ropes, number of H-back, how can we do that? And realistically, get down to two facilities that you put money into the last referendum. So, you know, when they come back, we're gonna talk about all the square footage we currently have and how we're using it, how can we better use it. So that's what's gonna come back to this group, uh, to the, you know, leadership team on the fifth, to go over the facilities on the eleventh. I did think about having a work session maybe on, you know, somewhere in April, um, and we have a board meeting on the twenty-fifth. April is a major testing month, just, you know, uh, for board members, and the board meeting is obviously late again because of Easter weekend. So, Mr. Chair, if you'd like to have a work session in April, we certainly could, all of my recommendations, maybe we look at early May, like, say, May fourth, or something like that after our next board meeting, because there'll be a lot more information we'll have by then, and then our board meeting is early, and then, uh, you know, you're not far off, but graduation people. And, you know, just need to let people know, first time during ten graduation. And then this placeholder, uh, this is daycare, so for some of you community members that have big daycare projects in mind, this is where our entire school body volunteers for a full day, so, you know, I felt like, Angie, I know your son's a captain of the trap team, we went out to the range in Glenwood and cleaned it up one, one day. They were very, um, they were very thankful we did that, you know? Zach, I don't know, we partner with Eagle Bank, sometimes we ask for other, you know, community organizations, uh, American, if they wanted to get involved, um, but I just wanna put that out there to you, Eagle Community people in the month of April, so.
Yeah, they definitely need a work session, if you have ordered.
Maybe we'll try to shoot for like, maybe the fourth, that night after daycare, I know it's a longer day for us, but I just know Long Lake is a big deal and you're gonna have five.
I've got kids in Long Lake.
Yeah.
Well, that's annoying, but.
It wouldn't have to be a Wednesday, we could always go like Monday the ninth, and you could pick a day like that. And so Corona, so we go single divine, huh? Get all the work sessions. We like a lot of work sessions.
So, uh, but anyways, for now, uh, we'll be some committee meetings, um, we got handbooks coming in April for first readings to policy, so it'll be pretty busy, uh, the goal is to get the first reading in our April board meeting, so I know Angie's gonna set up policy for you, uh, for the policy committee people. Facilities, we getting this information, personnel will start negotiations with our mental health principal groups, knock that out next. And activities, uh, I, I don't know, I'm sure we'll have something coming up, but I, I don't have a date in mind, but I'll work on those this next week.
So have Angie send out a invite beginning of May for a work session, please respond if it does not work for people, or respond either way.
How do you guys feel about?
I think the ninth, for the ninth.
Be okay, a work session, I know we have a board meeting just the following week, but I think that should work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I lost my highlighters, Ted, can I stop for a little bit?
I lost one highlighter, can I stop for a little bit? Okay. All in, entertaining a motion adjourned.
T-Rex gonna make a motion?
Thank you Ted, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Hey Scott? I'll see you tomorrow for everybody's.